And according to the Open Public Meeting Act of the state of New Jersey, adequate notice of this work session, regular meeting of the Franklin Township Council was made as required indicating that this work session, regular meeting, will take place at the Municipal Building at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, June 11, 2024.
Thank you. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then remain standing for the invocation by Councilman Vasanella.
If you can remain standing, thank you. Let's take the next few moments of silence to each seek in our own way, whatever source of inspiration we go to. So we will achieve strength and power in our thoughts and decisions to be for the benefit of all people at all times and may, we work together towards war, excuse me, towards world peace and all have a very fun and, most importantly, safe summer. Amen.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilwoman Embarrasson.
Here.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilwoman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman Oni Jako.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnik.
Present.
Councilwoman Udi.
Here.
Councilman Vasanella.
Here.
Councilman Wright.
There is no proclamations or, there are no proclamations or comments today, so we're on to the public session. Do we have a motion open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in second and all, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say nay. Motion is carried. We are now open to the public. Each person may speak for five minutes. No yielding of time. You may come up once. Please state your name and address. Anyone wishing to speak?
Hi. Jim Johnston at 34 Norwich Place. I want to express my disappointment with the recent Oprah bill passed by the State Assembly. Oprah, Open Public Records Act, sponsored by Assembly Joe Danielson and recently signed by Governor Murphy. So I know, I know it's already law and they signed for it, but I just want to express my reservations about this because it's going to have an impact on our town, I think. It's going to, this new law is going to destroy Oprah as we know it in New Jersey and it's going to destroy transparency in government. I think you may remember, this is going back three years ago, I myself once submitted an Oprah request. I wanted to find out all the open space money that was in the township budget and, and they gave it back to me in an Excel spreadsheet. And Mr. Mayor, you were kind enough to have Mr. Warlocker put all that into a table, remember that? I don't know, this is like three years ago. And that was a very good table, that really, it was very educational. It showed that we have an open space budget that is used to, you know, buy land, to preserve the land for open space, but also there's a portion of that money that's used to maintain our municipal parks, like pay the salaries of the people who are maintaining the parks and the, and the, and the cost of the equipment. And like, and the summary, and the summary of your table, you wrote that the total budget for maintaining our municipal parks is $1.4 million and of that, $870,000 is taken out of the open space fund for the purpose of, you know, paying, paying for the cost of maintaining the parks. And the, and the rest of the money for, of that $1.4 million is taken from a general fund. So I thought that was very good. I don't know if that's the, how other towns handle open space. Do they, do they use all their money for, for buying land, for open space, or are we the only town that diverge some of that money for the, for paying people salaries? But getting, but getting back to this, this new law, I hear that it's going to be, it's going to be curtailing our ability to get access to public records and they're going to have something called fee shifting so that if the government encourages a, oh, is the timer going?
No.
Oh, good. I, I, do I get all the free time?
No, it's not going to. You're good. Off the clock, Jim.
Thank you, thank you for noticing.
I'll keep, I'll keep, I'll keep talking for the next half hour, is that okay? Just stop the clock. Okay. All right, so, okay, so, yeah, okay, the, like, fee shifting, so if, under this new law, if I submit an Oprah request and for a, for an Oprah report and the government encouraged a cost, this new law is going to say that I'm going to be liable for paying the cost? Are you going to send me a bill for, for that? And even worse, this new bill says-
By the way, sir, that's not true.
Wait, wait, oh, okay. Okay, but, okay, you can correct me.
I'll, I'll talk about it later, but I just-
But also what I hear in this new bill, it's going to allow the government to sue the person who's requesting the data. Is that true? That's what I, I've been reading that. So that, that would, that would scare me away. Okay, so, but, you know, it's going to have an impact on our town. Even though you said before, it's, it's not your jurisdiction, you know, it's the, it's the State Assembly, it is going to impact this town council because it's going to, it's going to impact how you, how you respond to these Oprah, Oprah requests. So, so, so that, so I guess my, my question is, you know, what's the status of that? Can we still keep submitting Oprah, Oprah requests to you without, without having to worry if I'm going to be sued or, or if I had to pay the bill or? But again, I want to thank you for the help you gave me in that other one. I, I still got that table you, you made for me. Yeah, okay? Okay, okay, thank you.
My name is Carol Peterson. I live on Lake Avenue in Somerset. Mayor, lawyer, council members. Number one, you're bringing up an issue later today about idling. Can you hear me?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Okay. You're bringing up an issue about idling. Idling has been put on the books and finable since 2012 in the state of New Jersey. I am imploring you, pass laws, put up signs, especially one in the intersection of Lake, Hill and Spring. We shouldn't have to be putting up with garbage trucks parking in that area at 4:00 AM in the morning when they don't pick up even at 7:11 till 6:00 or after. We have semis now parking on Spring. We have a neighbor who goes out, right now it's quiet as a mouse. It's been that way all day, but all night he runs his trucks, sometimes for an hour, sometimes for two, sometimes for four. And he really needs to be addressed that idling is against the law. I have another neighbor who can see them when they get in the trucks. I can't because of the trees. I can certainly hear them when they're 90 decibels on a monitor in my house and bedrooms at 4:00 AM in the morning. That's hard on your health, cardiac, lung, because of the fumes and the pollution of the air. I just got my husband out of St. Peter's fifth floor yesterday. His problem is his cardiac function has dropped drastically. He was in pulmonary edema and I have to contribute it because I have trouble with my allergies when I have fumes coming in my bedrooms all night. You can't open the window to dissipate them. The air conditioner turned on doesn't help them. So please take this seriously. Then it gives the police authority, when you call them, to investigate, especially if you know who's doing it, but they turn the truck off real fast when the police car comes down the street. And I refer to the New Jersey state law. I think you're going to have to put it up in both Spanish and English because a lot of people on the street now do not speak English and do not understand English. The second one is regarding garbage. And I have here your laws that you've made, your ordinances. We have two people on the street who do not have garbage pickups. For whatever reason, I don't know why, but I can tell you this much, if an 80-year-old lady who used to live at Ten Lake could afford garbage once a month and worked it out with a garbage collector, this person who's living there now could at least have it picked up once or twice, not carried away in garbage bags or dump it on neighbor's property or on the curb. And I refer to that. The owner or occupant of every occupied premise shall supply a sufficient quantity of approved covered containers as well because now we're getting mosquitoes. So I think the neighbor needs to clean out his garage of his rubbish and put his equipment in open containers in there and close them in so we don't go walk out the door and get bit by mosquitoes. They're not my mosquitoes. I have a small dish for my virile cats who've come to my house when neighbors have died and believe me, by noon, the water's gone. So they get another bowl, by 8:00, the water's gone. And with it getting hotter, it's not going to last all night either. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council. I'm Reverend Sonia Redd, 23 Mustang Trails, Somerset, New Jersey.
Reverend George Montanari, 11 South Middle West Road, here in Somerset.
Reset the timer, please.
Clergy up here, you got to put the clock on.
Okay, we're here representing the Franklin Township Interfaith Council and we're here because the last, last month, we had a meeting here at the town council and during that time, at that last meeting, many of our neighbors got up and they spoke about the pain that they're experiencing as a result of the conflict between Israel and Hamas and the effect that it's had on the Gaza Strip. And so many of our community members here in Franklin Township are experiencing a lot of pain, a lot of hurt as a result of this war that is continuously going on. Most of the members, we had young people, as young as the fourth grade, high school students and others who came and talked and spoke about the emotional distress that they're going through because of what they're experiencing as a result of what they're seeing with regards to this war. They really want to ask, they asked for actually, that the town council sign a, or draft some kind of a statement for ceasefire as well as the return of the hostages on both sides. And the town council did respond saying that they thought it was not appropriate that they do so. And even though many did express that they're, they would be praying for those in our community as well as those abroad who are experiencing and suffering this, from this pain and all the, what's going on, the horrific deaths and injuries that are going on in the Middle East right now. And we were here and we heard all that was said and our heart is just moved by not just what we heard, but what we too have seen. In fact, our heart literally breaks when we look at some of what we're seeing with regards to the hurt. However, we heard what the people said and we, we know that many had ideas, there were ideas that were expressed. And we are here as the Franklin Township Interfaith Council to let you know that we heard and we care and we have taken some of the comments to heart and we are working on ideas now and we want our community to know that we are working to help address this issue. It's so important that all of us understand that we have a shared humanity. It doesn't matter if you're, if you're Jewish, if you're a Muslim, a Christian, we're all created by the same God. And God has given all of us, whether it's in the Torah, the Quran, the Bible, the commandments are still to love your God and to love your neighbor as you love yourself. And so we want our community here in Franklin Township, which is a very diverse community and is a beautiful community, but we also realize some of the relationships are strained. So we've made a commitment to work in our, the way we can work, in our council to help do what we can to help bring about a shared love, shared relationships, respect for one another. So we've got, got some things in work and I'll let Pastor George speak to some of the things that we might be, that we are considering.
Thank you.
Just wanted, if counsel's right with it, since you are two speakers, I feel it's a little longer than a minute thirty.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Vasanella.
I do just want to say that, that our commitment is to say that we recognize that our community members, whatever the source of their pain, whatever the source of their grief, that grief is grief and, and we're really called to care for those who are grieving, to stand beside those who are working for peace and justice and to work hard at healing strained relationships wherever they might be. As an interfaith council, we want to work hard at that. We are working as a group of clergy who are willing to stand side by side, just from across a variety of spectrum of traditions and perspectives, to be able to stand side by side and, and work at that very, very hard. We want to be a role model for the community on how to be able to do that, to be of different faiths but in concord with one another. And we also want to just encourage our community the best way that we can to be able to do, to do that as well. So thank you for your time in hearing us out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else?
Okay. Mayor? I just want to apologize, I said council, I meant if it was okay with mayor and I know chair in the meeting is an important part of it. Thank you.
My name is Adil Khan. I live on Hasbrook Drive. I've been a township resident for six years. So I was at the last council meeting two weeks ago and had the opportunity to listen to how the genocide that's occurring in Gaza is affecting our township residents and I wanted to share my own concerns. At the last meeting, one of the things that I heard from Councilwoman Francois, who's not, who's not here tonight, gave me some food for thought. She had the courage and clarity of mind to say something so many people have been thinking, which is, I don't, and I quote her, "I don't like my tax dollars going over there either." So I thought to myself at the end of that meeting, how much of my hard-earned money is going there? How much of our hard-earned money is being used to kill babies? And I did the math and I want to share that math with you. So as you know, we give $3.8 billion in military aid to Israel annually. Of that $3.8 billion, our township's residents' contribution, including everybody in this room, is approximately $555,087. That's a conservative estimate. Another estimate has our contribution at $782,800. So let's say we went with a conservative number. What could we do with that money if we kept it here? If that money stayed within the township, we could offer 65 households with public housing annually. Or we could offer 192 children with low cost or free healthcare for a year. Or we could hire five elementary school teachers or we could pay off student loans for 14 township residents. This is just with our part of the $3.8 billion. However, we have given as a country, Israel another $12.5 billion this year, which means that we, as taxpayers in Franklin, if I did the math correctly, paid an additional $1.7 million out of our federal taxes. Imagine what we could do with that money if we kept it in the township. All of the math I did, that I did, is available on notmytaxdollars.org so you can look at it yourself when you have a chance. So you may argue, and I've heard this argument before, why are you coming to a local town council to talk about federal tax dollars and federal policy? Well, there's two reasons. Number one, even if it's federal tax money, it's my money, still my money. Local councils have a role in advocating for this residents' interests at all levels of government and by taking a stand, they can influence policy and funding decisions that reflect the community's values. Secondly, there's a historical precedent. During the Vietnam War, many small towns around the country passed resolutions which allowed for public policy change at a federal level. So let me be clear, I have no problem with our country using our tax dollars to help an ally do things that are essential and moral. However, when our hard-earned money is being used to fund the killing of innocent men, women and children, that is where we need to raise our voices and ask for it to stop. Voting for the ceasefire resolution will send a signal to the, signal to the rest of New Jersey and our government that the residents and the leadership of this township are concerned about how our money is being used. We would rather have this money reinvested back into our communities when we can, where we can use it for good rather than the way it is being used today. Thank you very much.
My name is Ahmad Avzaz. I live at 12 Garrettson Drive in Franklin Park. Been a resident of Franklin for 20 years now. And I've, I've spoken in front of this council before. I'm here to advocate for, you know, a ceasefire resolution. And the basis for that is not to get into one side or the other. I'm not asking you to pick sides. What I'm asking you to do is to actually vote for your humanity. I'm sure we could dissect all the bad things that one side or another may have done. We could dissect the history of multiple populations and peoples, you know, going back decades, if not hundreds of years. That's not what I think the residents of this township are asking you to do. What we're asking for is to allow what decent human beings should always do, which is dialogue, which is to put down their weapons and find a solution and advocate for a solution that respects each other, that respects one's ultimate humanity. There's no sense in, in trying to say that I'm, I'm advocating for a ceasefire for one side or, or another because at, at this point, we're well past that. I truly do hope all hostages can be brought home. But you're not going to do that by dropping bombs across towns and buildings and recovering parts of people from under the rubble. You are going to do that by sitting across and actually trying to figure out how, how we get past this point. And the reason why people have come out to ask you to do that is because you're our representatives. We can be a voice, but you're, you're, you're the embodiment of that voice. I, I've been proud to live in a township that I feel has been as enriching to me from a diversity aspect, from a, from a different opinion aspect of being able to not necessarily have to agree with someone but have the utmost respect for that person. And that's all we're asking you to do, is to represent the community in that way. To represent the community in a way that says, we have to get past all this. We have to be able to find a solution that's not really served humanity for centuries. The best solutions happen from dialogue, from sitting across and having respect for one another and the only way you're going to get that respect is not by beating it into someone. So I, I'm asking, I'm urging you, I'm not asking you to pick sides, vote for your humanity, vote for the humanity of your residents. And, and, and please pass the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
My name is Zana Seima. I live on Grissom Lane. I've been a proud resident of Franklin Township for, I would say, approximately eight years. I'm a homeschooling mom of four. My husband is a pediatric oncologist at St. Peter's. He's the chair there. He's a Palestinian refugee and he's never been to Palestine, of course. He lived in the refugee camps in Lebanon for many years and made their way up to an actual home. So I'm here today on behalf of him, his family, my mom, who also is a Palestinian refugee from Haifa. I've had several family members speak before here and I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just a little bit disappointed. I was born and raised here and I'm just disappointed in the, the lack of unity. Let's put it that way. I didn't wear the scarf on my head all my life and, you know, I honestly wasn't prepared to speak. I wasn't planning on speaking, but putting, I felt, I feel like at some point in my life when I became a visible Muslim, it's when I started feeling a huge difference. And honestly, this is one of the points in my life where I am very disappointed, especially from the people who represent us in our township council, in our, you know, in the United States, because this isn't who we are. This isn't who you are and I know it's not. I know a lot of this is out of fear, unfortunately, and I know that we can unite and we can make this work and we can make this happen, we can make a statement because that's who you guys are, right? And I'm, I'm going to read something that I, I did write last second, just for the sake of saying it again, although I do feel like I sound like a broken record because many people that are in this room already have said this over and over and over again. And it's truly a shame, shame on all of us. I'm here today not just as a community member, but as a Palestinian deeply affected by the ongoing conflict in our homeland. My husband is a Palestinian refugee, as I stated earlier, and my mother is also a Palestinian refugee who has never entered the land because she was never allowed to and my husband lived through fear, 11-year-old held at gunpoint at some point in his life by the Israeli Defense Forces or the Israeli Defense Forces at, just because they found a, a solar panel battery in his basement, wondering what it was. They held him at gunpoint thinking it was a bomb that his father created who was very smart, you know, at, at the time. They had to make ends meet and they had to figure out ways to get, you know, whatever it was, whether it was power, water, whatever supplies they needed, right? So he was held at gunpoint and I did not hear that from him probably 10 years into our marriage. We were actually sitting with one of our friends here at a dinner table and he just came out with a story and even my children were very shocked, you know, and, you know, so anyway, let me go on. So the situation in Palestine has reached a critical point. Every day, we witness heartbreaking scenes of violence, destruction and loss of innocent lives. This conflict does not only affect those in Palestine, but reverberates through Palestinian communities around the world, including right here in Franklin Township. Our community is directly impacted by the ongoing violent, violence. Many of us have family and friends in the affected areas and the emotional toll is immense. The psychological burden, the constant worry and the sense of helplessness affect our daily lives and our ability to contribute fully to this community. As a community and our moral responsibility that values peace, justice and human rights, it's our moral responsibility to speak out against violence and advocate for a ceasefire, we must stand in solidarity with those who are suffering and use our voices to call for an end to the bloodshed. Franklin Township has a- Franklin Township has a proud, proud history of supporting justice and human rights. And I've read about it, and I believe it. By passing a ceasefire resolution, we continue this tradition and send a powerful message that our community stands for peace and protection of innocent lives. For my family, the conflict is not just a distant issue. It's deeply personal. My husband has endured life as a refugee, and my mother has lived through wars outside of Palestine. As I said before, never being able to visit her homeland due to fear. And their experiences both are a testament to the urgent need for peace and stability. With Father's Day around the corner, I ask you to reflect on your own fathers. How many of your dads would be proud of you, sitting here today as a council member and not standing up for this resolution at such an important time in our lives? We are seeing the world crumbling around us. It is our moral responsibility. Think of the values that your fathers instilled in you and the legacy of courage and compassion that they would want you, as human beings, to uphold, not as a Palestinian, not as a Jew, not as a Christian, not as a Shia, not as a Sunni, but as a human. I urge the council to adopt this resolution by calling for an immediate ceasefire to Palestine. And by doing so, we align ourselves with the values of compassion, justice, and humanity. This resolution is a step towards peace and a brighter future for every one of us affected by this conflict, for your grandchildren, for my grandchildren. Thank you for your time and consideration. And I hope that you will join us in taking this important stand for peace and support the ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Khalid Zayed. I'm a resident of Piscataway, New Jersey. And I'm a Palestinian American, and I'm totally impacted by what's happening in occupied territories, Gaza and the West Bank. My family is from Ramallah area, so I'm not from Gaza, but I've seen my own people being slaughtered every single day in Gaza. Children have been bombed, women, hospitals, everything has been obliterated. The Palestinian people have been living under military, brutal military occupation for the past 76 years. Everybody liked to believe that, a lot of people like to believe that this conflict, so-called conflict, is starting on October 7th, but it did not start on October 7th. The Palestinian people have been living so much, under so much brutal military occupation. And before October 7th, Israel bombed Gaza, a week before October 7th. In 2023, Israel bombed the West Bank. They killed about 300 civilians in the West Bank. So I wanted to remind you that the President of the United States introduced a ceasefire resolution to the United Nations. Israel has yet to accept it. And I would like to ask you, as a city council member, to adopt this resolution, calling for ceasefire. When you think about it, ceasefire is basically asking for the stop of the fighting. We're not asking you to take one side. We are only asking you to take the side of humanity. The other side would like you to believe that they want you to continue supporting this war that is happening in Gaza right now. But we are asking you here, we are asking you to call for ceasefire. That's all we're asking you for. We're not asking you to take sides, even though if you really should look at what's happening in Gaza. Every single day, we see horrible videos of kids and women and children and civilians being bombed in Gaza. Just three days ago, Israel sent an eighth convoy, you know, under the, guys, eighth convoy, and they bombed the refugee camp in Gaza. They killed 274 Palestinians. Many of them are children and women. And they ended up killing three of their own hostages. So we are asking for ceasefire because it's the right thing to do. You know, we also ask you if you could also write a statement calling for, you know, an end to this occupation that has been happening for so long. The Palestinian people deserve to have their own state and live in peace. They can't be living like this for so long. You have to think about what's happening to the Palestinian people. This is wrong. Almost every single hospital in Gaza has been bombed by Israel. 1,000 mosques has been destroyed. A few, a couple of churches have been attacked by Israel. Senior centers, the cancer center in Gaza, everything, there's nothing left over. 60 to 70% of the infrastructure in Gaza has been destroyed, completely destroyed. There's nothing. If you look at satellite pictures, you will see nothing, just rubbles. That's all you see. And how long are we going to wait for this? It's been almost nine months now. About 100 US cities already passed resolutions calling for ceasefire. Why can't Franklin Township do the same? What is wrong with taking a ceasefire? I know some people say we don't take sides, but this is not taking side. You're asking, you're basically calling, the US government, the federal government, already called for ceasefire. Why can't the township call for ceasefire? It's nothing wrong with doing that. You have to think about, you need to make, you need to be, most Americans, actually 60, 70% of Americans support ceasefire. So you're now actually, you are actually with the majority. By adopting a ceasefire resolution, you are standing with the majority of American people. So again, I would like to ask you to please call for ceasefire. If anyone asks, if anyone comes to you and says this is taking side, it's not taking side. You are basically asking for the fighting to stop. That's all you're doing. You know, if you have any question, I have, my own family live in the West Bank. We've been getting harassed every single day. Settlers, illegal settlers come down from the hills, and they start bombing, or they start burning cars and attacking homes, attacking Palestinians. It's time for the Palestinian people to live in peace and seek justice. We all have to speak out. Don't worry about your position. You know, you have to do the right thing and speak out for the oppressed people around the world. We did it in South Africa, we did it in other places, in Ukraine. Everybody spoke out about Ukraine. When Russia invaded Ukraine, why not speak out about the invasion of Gaza, invasion of the West Bank? What is wrong with doing that? Please, I'm asking you. But let's not, we have been going out to different towns. Piscataway passed a ceasefire resolution last week. Paterson, New Jersey, many towns, Jersey City. Many different cities around the country already called for ceasefire. Many celebrities, politicians, and judges, from all over. People are asking, calling for ceasefire. We should be doing the same thing here. So if you have any question for me, we are here. We are not calling for violence. We are calling for the rights of Palestinian people to live in peace and justice and not being, getting bomb rain down on them every single day. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed council member. Rashim Alat, 21 Woodfield Court. Stand before you today once again with heavy hearts, urging for a ceasefire in Palestine. Since our last gathering, more lives have been lost, more families shattered, and more children robbed of their innocent. The cycle of violence knows no bounds, and it's imperative that we take action to end the senseless bloodshed. I find myself questioning, where is the humanity in our action? Where is the faith in our ability to choose peace over war, life over death? It's disheartening that despite the clear path towards reconciliation, more bombs are dropped. It becomes painfully evident that for some, humanity never takes priority. In the nearby Piscataway Township, they have already taken a decisive step by passing a resolution for ceasefire. It's now our turn to do the same, to stop our hard-earned dollars from funding a genocide that started and stand on the right side of history. That is our ask. I want to take a moment to recognize the unwavering dedication and selfness of individuals like Dr. Hamerwein and Dr. Muthin, who we were expecting to speak today, who tirelessly provide medical care in Gaza and a mixture of chaos and danger. Their commitment to saving lives even at the risk of their own is a testament to resilience of human spirit and universal desire for peace. Yet even as these heroes work tirelessly to mend the wounds of war, I cannot help but feel senses of frustration. While feel their labor for heal, others in very counsel turn their blind eye to the suffering of innocent civilians and to prioritize politics over humanity. Their sacrifices and those of countless others cannot be in vain. It is time for us to set aside our differences, to listen to each other, and with empathy and understanding, and to work towards a sustainable solution that ensures the safety and dignity of all people in the region. Let us honor the courage and compassion of individuals like Dr. Hamerwein and Dr. Muthin by choosing the path of peace, by choosing the end of cycle of violence, and by choosing to end, by choosing to build a future where every child can grow up without fear. Last but not least, I want to personally thank Dr. Reverend Wirt and Pastor George for their kind words. Thank you. That's all. Ceasefire now. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Gossem. I live on 43 Treetops. Last time I came here in the last town hall, I introduced myself as a nobody. And I thought a lot about that, and I thought about the comments that we had gotten afterwards. And I kind of want to share my story a little bit more, right? Because from my perspective, this is really about me. It's about the township. And I probably haven't been the most known person, right? Last time, I kind of shared a little bit about my experience post 9/11, the trauma, the Islamophobia, the effect it has on your confidence, the effect it has on you willing to put your name out there. It kind of beats you down. So you kind of just trudge forward. You know, when I see a Disney movie and someone says, "Just keep swimming", yeah, it kind of rings different for me, right? But some things maybe just shouldn't stay the way they are, right? That's the status quo. That's the status quo that I've lived with for 20 years. And the last six months have been very different, right? Things are happening. I can't reconcile them in my head. I hear concepts like psychological safety at work. I hear concepts like DEI at work. And I always think, like, is that something that's just applicable over there? But not really at home, not really in my community? And let's just make it a little bit more personal. Sammy's not here today, but I think everyone sitting in front of me knows Sammy Shabon really well, right? 35 members of his family have died. 35. And we've heard that. And we nod our head, and we say, gee, that sucks, in our own way, but that's what we say. And so what I would like to challenge, and I don't know if this is appropriate, you know, for this type of a forum, but I'm new, so forgive me if it's not. But I'll say, Mr. Robert, Mr. Alex, Mr. Charles, Mr. Rahm, Ms. Kimberly, Mr. Philip, Mr. Lewis, Mr. Ed, Mr. James, Ms. Shippa, and Carl, Mr. Carl. Let's do a mental exercise. Let's write down 35 of our own family members. I have a large family. I have lots of cousins, my mom's side, my dad's side. Let's make a list, all of us. Equality for all, right? Let's share a little bit of Sammy's experience. What must it be like to put together a list of 35 people who you call on their birthdays, who you call on your holidays, who you celebrate with, who you mourn with? And let's all make a list. It's my family member's list. It's your family member's list. And in that mental exercise, just think what it would mean if they weren't here with us anymore. Nobody wants to make that list. But when we talk about DEI, this is the other side of it. And this is the not-so-great side of it. We talk about empowerment. It's also about sharing pain. And someone said that Franklin Township doesn't do politics on the larger level. And that's the status quo. And in my mind, the status quo hasn't worked for me. I dealt with it. I bought it. And I don't blame anyone for not knowing my story. Maybe it's my own fault for not speaking up sooner. But at this point, I'm asking to be heard. And I'm not asking to be heard by someone in DC. I'm not asking to be heard somewhere far away. I'm asking to be heard by my family, by my community, and by my local leadership, right? And I'm asking for a ceasefire resolution. And someone else said, now, look, it's complicated. And yeah, we can read books, and we can read a lot of the theory of who did what. And, you know, people who spoke before me did well to talk about statistics and everything. I'm not taking away from any of that. But when you make that list of 35 members, ask yourself, is it complicated? Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, dear mayor and esteemed council members. My name is Zaysh Ali, and I'm a resident of Franklin Township for about three years now. I have two children that attend Thomas Edison Energy Smart Charter School. You may have seen me before. I may be a familiar face now, which I think is a good thing, but I will continue to be, even if I am the only one or if I'm among the hundreds. But I will keep coming back, even if I sound redundant, repetitive, but to say the same message. Despite the thousands of miles between us in a conflict, this conflict is very close to home, and it's impacting us right here in Franklin Township. You may argue that, you say, this war is like any other we have seen in the past, but that is not the case. We now live in a world where we can see every corner of the globe, and we can see how and what is exactly happening. We are seeing it, hearing it, feeling it day in and day out, and the wickedness of war that has fallen upon the people on both sides of the conflict. The most disturbing are those of the children, trapped under rubble, broken bones, burned faces, and the massacres that are occurring where they seek to find refuge. And that's just the tip of the iceberg of what we actually see. There are more details that cannot be shared on this platform as they are too disturbing. And we see this month after month. And we have been coming here since it all started, trying to get you to agree on one thing. And I know you're already anticipating what I and the others here have to say. And furthermore, you have already prepared a response to the presentation of our request. Yet nothing about this situation is mundane, nor is it repetitive, nor is it deserving of a cookie cutter response. The honor and privilege of being the most diverse town in New Jersey comes with a responsibility and these unique challenges. It is not an honor earned simply by a certain number of inhabitants of diverse origins living in a town, but by the ability of the town to listen, to understand, and represent different dialogues. It is not an honor with which you can say, it is not applicable to us or is not in our lane. That option is no longer an option. And just like they say, anyone can be a dad, but it takes a significant person to be a father. It's the same thing with the township. Anyone can earn this diversity reputation by simply a physical characteristic of people, of the diversity of the people living there. But the actual township that can claim the honor of diversity is by its ability to navigate, to create dialogue, and make difficult decisions. It requires us to understand the different worlds where we all come from and what experiences make us human. It is active leadership and active representation that earns the award and honor of diversity. And here, we have that chance. The ceasefire, the call for ceasefire only started as small localized voice, and that voice amplified in 1,000 different ways, in 1,000 different communities. It stretched far across the globe and to constituents that have no hand or direct involvement in the matter. Why did these communities and nations speak up regardless of their involvement, regardless of their geographical location being irrelevant to where the war is taking place? You have people like Americans for Peace, global Christian leaders, and AAACP, Artists for Ceasefire, Macklemore. These people and organizations have nothing in common, yet these organizations and these individuals have been calling for a ceasefire. So why are they not staying in their lane? Because they're compelled to speak, because not speaking at this point is not an option. And if you are leading, if you're claiming to be, if we claim to be the second most diverse town in New Jersey, then we have to have something to show for it. What is an interfaith organization or collaboration or interethical communities living together if we fall apart when it comes to these hard decisions? It just doesn't take the physical aspect. It takes actual strong proactive leadership and hard decisions. So I don't think voting for a ceasefire resolution is going out of our lane. I think it's actually what we're supposed to do as what we claim, as being one of the most diverse towns in New Jersey. Thank you. Thank you.
My name is Nadine. I'm a 22, I'm a Franklin Park resident for 22 years, and almost half my life, less than half my life here.
Your address? Your address, sir?
It's Columbus Drive, 93 Columbus Drive. I'm not here to give you a lecture or tell you something about history what you guys don't know. All of you know everything, what's happened, what's happening, so I'm not even going to that. All I'm asking is, it's very emotional for me. Are we not the children of same God? Moses or Abraham? Yeah, then why can't we live in peace? It's just a matter of ceasefire resolution. We're not asking for anything else. I'm sure most of you are parents, you must or might have daughters, have a son, daughter, son, or something. And just imagine, one day somebody bombs you at your home, and you're holding your child's body, torn apart, some might not have limbs, somebody's body is open in half. What would you wish for? The first thing you wish for, the war to end. You wish for a ceasefire to happen. You wish that this nightmare ends now, not tomorrow, day after tomorrow. First of all, you wish that this thing never happened or started. What would you think? You will ask for a ceasefire, am I right? You will not ask for a bomb or a gun or anything like that. You want to do that, that you go out and kill that person. You will have that feeling. The first thing you want and wish for will be a ceasefire. Today, you need to choose if you're going to stand on the right side of the history or the wrong side. If you choose the right side of the history, your name will be in the history. And if you don't, you will just be an unknown person. You will be nothing. You are sitting underneath the picture of Abraham Lincoln. I was not coming, I didn't come here to talk, but you know, just listen to all this, I'm just talking. You're sitting underneath the picture of Abraham Lincoln. He was on the right side of the history. He did the right decision. He chose the right thing. He is in history. All those who didn't choose the right thing, you might not even know him. And that's why his picture is here. Ninety-nine point of the percent, that's the reason. There may be some other reason you have his picture, but he chose the right decision. I'm not asking you to take any size, Israeli, Palestinian, no. All I'm asking is to choose the right decision, choose the right thing. Just pass the resolution, please, for ceasefire. Stop this bombing. Stop this killing. You are children of same God. Thank you.
If you're under 18, you don't have to give your first name.
I'll do it anyways. My name is Janara Gori. I'm 13, and I live on 20th Super Court. Recently, I just had my eighth grade graduation, and I'm going into a new stage in life, which is high school. And the question has been posed, what do I want to be when I grow up? Well, I've known this for a while. I wanted to go into health. More specifically, I want to be a surgeon. And then people ask, what type of surgeon do you want to be? Well, I want to be maybe a neurosurgeon, cardiothorax surgeon, but I just want to know that, I just want to save lives. When you think of saving lives, though, as a doctor, and then you think of being in a clean hospital, operating with someone on the table with a bunch of fancy equipment around you, a bunch of other doctors, anesthesia, all these expensive things, except that's not the case in Palestine. In Palestine, you're in a dirty hospital with millions, not millions, but like so many patients on the floor, ranging from babies, kids, elderly, adults, and even the disabled. You have to operate in a crumbling building with no anesthesia, barely any equipment, and then all you have to hear is their screams. Along with that, you also have to operate, bombs happening outside of you. You don't know if you're going to die. You don't know what's going to happen. All you know is that you're there. These people spend half of their lives going through education, going to college, learning and devoting their time just to become a doctor, and then they decide to use it to go into a war-ridden place to help people. These people have their utmost bravery and courage, and along with that, the people, the victims, also have so much courage. Now that school is ending, I have had a lot of free time, and I've been spending it to read articles. And in these articles, I see blurred images of children who've had their skulls cracked open, people under the rubble, dead bodies in bags. And then I can't help but wonder, how can people look at this and say that it's their fault? How can people look at a child with broken legs, with bones and burns, and say that it's because they live in Palestine, because they live in the country where Hamas is from, that it's their fault they're going through this? The bias here is just unreasonable. It's shameful even. When people, things like the Washington Post or Al Jazeera, they post articles, and then they call bias for supporting Palestine. But if you go to like New York Times or CNN, they're applauded for just supporting Israel and Israel alone. So I implore you to advocate for a ceasefire in Gaza and end this unfair bias and all the suffering of the victims. Thank you.
My name is Sophia Turan. I live at 6th Conservancy Court in Franklin Park. I spoke last time. I really didn't want to speak this time, and I didn't want to speak last time. I'm not, it's not my comfort zone. But I'm just going to say a couple of things. Last time, I had mentioned that any of us who grew up in the state of New Jersey went to public schools here. We know very much that our curriculums in history taught us the importance of justice, taught us the importance of the concept of, you know, never again. We would never again allow a group of people to go through a genocide, to go through an ethnic cleansing, to be silent, that we needed to speak out, that no matter how small we thought our voices were, it's always important to stand up for justice and to say that when something's wrong, it needs to stop. I'm so tired of my kids, my grandkids, seeing this going on day in and day out. There is no justification for the brutal murder of children. And it needs to stop. We're asking that our township ask for a simple comment to say, yes, we think a ceasefire should happen. People need to talk. This needs to stop. Unfortunately, I feel like the legacy we're leaving our kids, which was different than the legacy that I grew up with in the public schools here, is that the words "never again" actually will never again mean anything, that our children and our grandchildren are going to say, you guys said that, but it actually meant nothing, that people don't want to apply that, and that people in positions in power are not saying that they need it to stop, they're not saying a ceasefire should happen, the concept that never again, people should go through this. And I mentioned last time that my family went through this as people from Bosnia. I lost 140 members of my father's family. I know what a genocide is. I know what it means when people are quiet. I know what it means when people don't say things. And it's very important that we stand up and we say it's wrong. It's very important that we ask for the ceasefire. And unfortunately, I feel sorry for you as township council members. I know it's very difficult for you, but we're going to have to keep asking for it, because this needs to stop. It's for humanity's sake, for our children's sake, our grandchildren's sake, our neighborhood, our town, and our community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak?
My name is Abby Rosenzweigwenseslow. I live at 110 Emerson Road. I moved my family here three years ago, and the reason why we chose to live here is because we wanted to live in a diverse and inclusive community. We have loved living here, and our children have enjoyed all that Franklin Township has to offer. Baseball, Tinks Golden Girls, who I know, Mr. Kramer, you've been a great supporter. So many things that we've done here, we've just been very welcomed. Our multiracial family has been welcomed with open arms wherever we go here. And I left last month's council meeting after hearing the powerful words of so many of my Palestinian neighbors sharing their sadness and fear, wondering how to explain to my children that the leaders over town have not yet found the courage to stand up for what's right. I am a Jewish American woman, and as you just heard, and as I'm sure you are aware, in our community, we say "never again" in reference to the atrocities of the Holocaust. Never again starts here. It's never again across the world, and it's never again in small communities like ours. The killing of innocent people should never be okay. We have to recognize that our silence is violence. We are all witnessing a genocide from afar, but we are all human, and we should behave as such. We need to let our neighbors know we stand with them. Yesterday, as my six-year-old son was pouring water into his cup from a gallon bottle, he said to me, mommy, I wish we could sell these big bottles to Palestine. We cannot let our children down. We have to do whatever we can to move toward peace. Our words matter, and our actions matter. Just like children and their limitless potential for empathy, I do not need to be Palestinian to imagine the horrors the innocent people of Gaza are enduring, and the horrors people who are here in our community are enduring by witnessing it. I only need to have a pulse to see the pain and feel the sadness of the suffering, and to not feel like people should be collateral damage. Passing a ceasefire resolution is the least we can do as a community to show our support for our Palestinian brothers and sisters. Thank you.
My name is Christine Sacario. I am at 100 John F. Kennedy Boulevard at the Presbyterian Church. I run the school there. And I live in Baum Brook. I've been in this community for about eight years. So full disclosure, I am Trinidadian, very proud. Growing up, I celebrated Eid, Diwali, Husein, Paghwa, Christmas, I'm born-again Christian, Shango Baptist Day. I am very cultured. And I think if you take all the noise away, the people in your community is really and truly asking you to understand their pain and simply say, yes, I understand, and it should end. If you take everything away, that's really and truly what they're asking. The Bible says blessed are the peacemakers. And you need people in your community to look at you and say, okay, yeah, these people empathize with me. They understand how I feel. I am not Muslim, and I don't have to be Muslim. I am human. To see anybody suffering, to see people in your community asking you over and over and over to understand this, or just to accept it, what you do, or what I do, will not change it. The UN passed a resolution. The America today, they accepted it. The Hamas leaders, last time I looked, they accepted it. Israel accepted it. What they're asking you in this community is honestly to understand their pain and say, yes, I understand, and it should end. That's all. They're not asking you for anything more. It is just to bring your community back together again, and it is peaceful. It's really disheartening. It honestly is disheartening, and this is only my opinion, that there must be one person on this council. There must be one voice that says, yes, let's bring it to a vote. If it doesn't pass, then it's fine. But one person should have that courage. It takes one voice in the wilderness. Before I came to America, I was always taught that this was the country, no matter what, you'll get justice. In my country, I may never get justice, but I know in this country, you can. And it is, it is disheartening. It really is sad to see so many in your community crying and unhappy, and simply asking you for, basically, it's just a word that says, it should end, that this pain, we understand this pain should end. That's what they're asking. It makes no difference, just like Mr. Kramer said, it makes no difference what you do here. On the big stage, it doesn't stop a bomb from falling, doesn't free a hostage, but it gives the people in your community, the people that vote for you, the people that come and support you, gives those people comfort in knowing that everybody on this board cares what I feel, what I think, that when 35 people in my family dies, somebody in my community cares. You cannot make a list with 35 people on it, can you? Mr. Kramer, can you make a list with 35 people?
I'll answer at the end.
Thank you.
I live on 6th Glaty Court, right across the street. I was sitting there stewing, wasn't planning to talk, but as we're sitting here talking, I get a sense of indifference amongst the council. I started to feel very upset. I think it's a joke that we start this council meeting with a prayer for world peace, but there's no desire or will to actually go for it. These words are empty. We're taught in Islam to say, assalamualaikum. In Hebrew, it's asholam aleikum, and with Christians, it's peace upon you. Peace. We wish peace amongst our fellow men. It's not just empty words. When a fellow man or a woman is in distress, or is upset, or her peace is disrupted, we are obligated to do something. As followers of Abraham, and Jesus, and Moses, and Muhammad, peace upon all them. Every time we come here, we see people choking, trying to hold back tears. And every single time, it's time for you guys to speak, I feel it's just indifference, and it's just a lot of political jargon. This is not a political issue. This is a moral issue. This is an issue about humanity. And you keep saying yourselves, never again. When the world showed no moral courage after World War II, we said, never again. And the fact that we live in a diverse community, such as Franklin, and we're saying that only applies to certain groups and not all of us, is insulting. I ask, I demand ceasefire now, please.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Mayor, looking like there's someone else coming up to speak. I'll motion to close the public portion. Second? Who within the second and all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. Public session is closed. Does council have any comments?
I'd just like to say, you know, as I look around the room and as folks have come, you know, week after week, I don't think it's law- you know, week after week, I don't think it's lost upon any of us, the pain that you're going through and the anguish. I don't see a council here that's indifferent. You know, I think beyond the fact that we are in a very diverse community, we all have suffered in different ways, and beyond the empathy that we can experience when we hear your stories, know that you're loved, you're supported, you're respected. Your peace, your protection, your ability to raise a family, to worship in safety, is a primary concern for us. And I know there's a lot of emotion, and sometimes we lose sight too of the facts of things, of what this council has done. And while the policy decision to not take on, you know, international decisions is disruptive and probably unsatisfactory, we did many months ago pass a resolution for peace, for understanding, for respect and protection against bigotry, against Islamophobia, against antisemitism, here in Franklin Township, focused on what we can do to protect our communities. We instructed the police to stand up and protect communities, to protect our houses of worship, to respond appropriately. And that's just really important. That's really what our focus is, and will continue to be. And that doesn't mean that, you know, what you're asking for is not appropriate. We heard news, you know, the UN has taken action, things have gotten beyond this council. The idea is really simple, sticking to issues for Franklin residents and staying away from international issues. And no, that doesn't solve it, because there's something else there that you're looking for. But I am very proud of the steps that we've taken. And I had meetings with a number of residents that were very productive. And, you know, I asked questions about what else can we be doing in the community, and we have taken every suggestion seriously, including, you know, working with the schools and encouraging Vice President Shabon of the Franklin School Board, who was invoked earlier, to do better about creating dialogue in our schools. Not appropriate for us on council, I was formerly school board president, so I'm familiar, but we relayed that information. And it's important for us to do everything that we can. So if there are more things that we can do right here in our home community for any of you, for your friends or your family, folks that share a faith or have a different faith, look like you or don't look like you, are living here a short time or a long time, we stand ready to do that. This council is serious about making an inclusive community. And we appreciate you coming out. And it's very difficult, when you make a policy decision, like not getting involved, to not be able to be responsive. It is a challenge for each of us. And I can say personally, and in an elected official role, it is a challenge. But I hope you'll be respectful of the decision that we've made, but more importantly, I hope that you understand that you're loved and celebrated, and this Franklin Township should be a comfortable place for you. And if it's not now, we're gonna continue to work to make it that way. So thank you very much for coming out, time and again, and expressing what is very difficult and heartfelt sentiments. It is not lost on any of us. It is hard to sit and, you know, and not be reactive. It's part of our role. It's a one-directional piece. And I very much appreciate it, and I just want you to know that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else on council? Go ahead.
Good evening, everyone, and again, thank you so much. First, let me thank Reverend Redd, as well as Pastor George from the Interfaith Council, and thank you for the plan of actions that you want to help take to help the community come together and stand up for each other. So we really appreciate that. Without doubt, it has been really very difficult and emotional and draining times for all of us since October 7. We are really sorry and extremely saddened to see so many innocent lives have been lost, so many children have become orphans, so many wives have become widows, and so many families are waiting to hear from loved ones who are either hostage or in prison. On a humanitarian basis, none of us wish to see more killing. I want the war to end, and have it last in peace, so Palestinian Israelis live together or next to each other. Now, you have heard, and you also heard from our deputy mayor, that this council has a longstanding policy not to present a resolution relating to international matters. Last meeting, Councilman Masonella mentioned that possibility of perhaps changing that policy. Now that our federal government has asked for ceasefire, I'd like to suggest the council to discuss changing this policy considering the current situation in Gaza. As for the tax dollars, I wish IRS would have given us the option to choose where we want our money to go. For sure, I would have loved to choose my money to go to food bank, for education of our children, job creation, helping families struggling to pay their rent, and helping homeless people in our township. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I wasn't going to speak, but I will. I understand your pain, and I want it to end. I'm hopeful that Secretary Blinken is successful in his efforts and find a way to stop this. The idea that we are doing this by not making passing a resolution because of who this is about, that it's because it's this group, we don't care, is absolutely unthinkable. I too can't reconcile in my head what is going on there. But Deputy Mayor, you are far more eloquent than I, and you said it well. It is painful to have a principle, as we do, about international events and not be able to speak out about this. That is, and I'm not asking you to feel sorry for me, that is painful. But beware of politicians who sacrifice their principles. This is a difficult thing for every single person up here. We've agonized about it, and we want it to end. Thank you. There were some other questions, there were some questions about...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to just correct some of the things that were said here tonight. So there has been new legislation with regards to updating the Oprah legislation, the Oprah bill. It will take effect in 90 days, so it's not currently in effect. It does not contain a fee-shifting provision, that's just not correct. It does put limits on, it doesn't make it automatic that a requester who is successful in updating a document can get an attorney fee, so it does put a limit on that. It limits it to only circumstances where the denial was in bad faith. I think Mr. Johnson described an Oprah request that he had done about a year ago. As that Oprah request was considered a year ago, it is exactly the way it would be considered in October of this year. If this bill goes into effect, there's absolutely no change. It modernizes Oprah so that it protects the privacy of information that is stored by the municipality. That was not contemplated when the Oprah law was put into effect in, I guess, 21 years ago. So those are the major changes. It, you know, it does have some provisions to curb abuses, certainly. I don't think Mr. Johnson would have to worry about getting sued by the municipality over an Oprah request unless he decides to make 500 Oprah requests a day. So, but I don't think he's gonna do that. He probably has better things to do. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add one thing on the Oprah issue. So, Mr. Johnson, I would like to address the comments you made about what was provided to you on a previous Oprah request by me. So actually, what I provided to you was not in keeping with the law regarding open public records that was previously in place and will be in place up until the estoppel period is over on the new legislation. In fact, the mayor asked me to create a report for you, which is not what Oprah requires. It requires reports and papers that are already in existence to be provided to one who makes a request for that. So what I did for you, in the interest of transparency in government, was not in compliance with Oprah, but at the request of my boss. So just want to go on the record.
And the mayor just wanted me to clarify something else. One other thing is that there's not a provision in the new Oprah law that would, if you lost, if you made a request and it wasn't a government record, that would allow the town to recover its fees from you, so we can't sue you for damages. We could just ask a court to determine whether an Oprah request is valid or not. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Public comment? Okay, we're on to council comments. I'll start again with Mr. Wright.
I'd love when you start with me. Don't really have anything up on my agenda, except for one little thing that I wanted to bring in my fellow council members, to make them aware of something that I need done. So here we go. Four High versus Five High. My residents do not want the height changed for any of the buildings on Hamilton Street. They would like the building to stay the same height, four. Now, they wanted to know from me, what would be the new price point for building an extra floor on a building when all the rest are for a high? Come to my conclusion, money. Because that could be the only reason. And I repeat, that could be the only reason possible, is more money. Because more money equals more apartments, which equals more money. And I'll say it again, more apartments equals more money. There's no other reason behind it. The traffic in the area has shown a sharp uptick in cars, but not to a point of severe congestion. Early morning, late evening, sometimes there's a problem, but they say, "Hey, Carl, we're willing to live with it." I say, "Okay, if you're willing to do with it, so am I." They do see some improvements in the area, a pizza shop that's come in, a donor shop that's on the drawing boards, and types of stores. They like that. "Okay, Carl, it's all right, we'll live with it." But with the extra floor, what type of business are you bringing in for the extra floor? Nothing. Again, more money. It seems that somewhere along the line, we will forget that it's mandated for a commercial and just go residential, to wit, excuse me? They go down to the ice cream polish store, right next door. Residents called me up on the phone, and they said, "Hey, Carl, we have a problem. They're gonna build a building right next to the ice cream store, which is right next to my house, with a garbage dumpster right across the fence from where I live, near my windows, I get to smell beautiful garbage." Okay, I go to the house, we cry a little bit, I'll see what I can do. To my amazement, they didn't put any retail underneath. It was strictly apartments. So I asked the question, if we mandated shops underneath stores, why was this being built with no stores? Ah, that was the big question. Halfway answer, half-assed answer, I should say, and it didn't solve the question. But of course, it was built. No commercial is what it is. We did a good fight. I wasn't allowed to continue my fight in person, because, as our attorney would tell you, I can influence some of the people up there, and that's why they don't want me to speak. Elected officials aren't supposed to speak. So I'm left with that, and I come with the, some people will say, "Carl, where are the residents at?" I don't see where they're at. What's going on with the store? If they got a problem, let me see them. And I'll tell you, they elected me. Unless that might be, they elected me. And they elected me to be their voice on this council. They elected me to represent them on this council. They elected me, and I'll say it again, to be their voice, and I'm talking about be their voice, and I will. I find out about these things because they see me on the street, because I do walk around. They burn up my cellphone, they burn up my email, and when it's real pressing, they'll show up around the neighborhood looking for me. That's just how it is, from Buttonwood Ave, all over the place, they actually find me and want to talk about these issues. I'm here for them, and I just want to speak to that issue. Now Wednesdays, sometimes I move around place to place. They come up with issues, some big, some small, but they're all big to me. And you say, "Well, Carl, how does that work?" Again, I don't see the residents. Well, I'll show you how that works. And everyone up here, council members that were here, were a test of this, that way you get an understanding of this. I dropped sidewalks on people's houses. Some of them said, "Carl, you put a bomb on people's houses." And I said, "You know, you're right. Half-million-dollar houses, I dropped the sidewalk on there." And at the time, I said, "I can be fired by the same residents that elected me." Let me say that again for you. I can be fired by the same residents that elected me. Our township manager, Mr. Vronlacher, will enlighten you on the fact that this program for sidewalks wasn't my idea. It was actually drawn up before I got here on council. So I guess those on council at the time figured they were gonna get fired, so they didn't do it. But I did it. One-man band, I wished everybody would have jumped on the bandwagon, but after it was done, "Carl, can we put some over here? Can we put some over there? Where's the money?" No one showed up for that. For or against? Oh, no. One did show up, and he complained, "Why didn't we put sidewalks up 30 years ago when his kid was walking to school?" I had no rap for him, because I said I wasn't here then, so I can't speak to it. So again, if you don't see the residents, but you hear my mouth, that's why. When I dropped speedhomes on people's front lawns, I do expect to hear some pushback, but that goes along with the cookies. Back to the height of the buildings. Now, I would like us to leave the height at four, not five. And I want us to correct whatever that's out there, or, let's put it this way, I want us to put a ordinance in place that stops any building on Hamilton Street from going higher than five, period. And, excuse me? And, excuse me, higher than four, period. No five, no five, just four. Now, I've seen us move other issues in town, rather quickly, you might add, or little things that we want. We have that ability, and I know we have that ability, because like they say, I've seen it done. So, on this one little issue, I expect, I demand that it be done. I expect, I demand, and so does my residents, that our next council meeting, there be an ordinance on there, on our agenda for the first reading, that does just that, no buildings under four, no buildings over four high, period, on Hamilton Street. I expect the last meeting of June two, bring that up at first reading. And I believe that second reading should come in July, when we only have one meeting. I expect that to be done. Now, if there's any question about that, if there's any thought about that, please let me hear it, because my residents out there in the four for it, they're watching this camera too. And they're watching me and as I speak. So, issues, bring them up, and if not, let it go. Mr. Mayor, that's all I got.
Thank you, Councilwoman Udine.
Yeah, well, see, I got the sign over here. I figured everybody saw it. Juneteenth Parade and Festival, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-four, at eleven o'clock. The parade leaves at Pine Grove Elementary School at eleven. Proceeds up Highland Avenue to Hamilton Street, down to, up Matilda Avenue to Neiman Williams Park. During the festival, celebrate black freedom and excellence. It starts at the Neiman Williams Park, it'll start at twelve o'clock and go to four. There'll be rides, food, vendors. And yes, I do have a clown suit, so all the kids out there, you will see me in the clown suit, walking down Hamilton Street. So, come on out, Juneteenth, you'll have some fun, meet your neighbors, bring the kiddies, have a good time. Thank you for reminding me, guys, even though, you know, put that there for everybody to see.
Thank you, Councilwoman Udine.
Thank you. Good evening. Just a few things to report on, it's been a light agenda on my end. We did have a public works meeting earlier today, and I know Councilman Vasanella and Councilman Embarrassan will provide further updates, but there will be notice on meter replacements going out, two weeks, approximately two weeks from now, and it will impact about forty percent of our town, so watch out for that letter. That no cost for replacement, but they just need to make sure there's an adult at home, and the documentation will have all the information as to what they're gonna do and what you should look out for in terms of the technician. Apart from that, Eid is coming up this weekend, Sunday or Monday. As we come together to celebrate Eid, let us remember the importance of spreading peace and harmony, especially in the Middle East. Heard from a lot of you today, heard from a lot of you in the last couple of weeks, and lots of prayers going out. I think this pain that you guys are offering to, as the premier mentioned, needs to end, and we're not on the other side of it, so just please make sure that you know that we also believe that this violence needs to end. This council has always been very diverse. We do a lot of things for township residents. I've joined this township council not too far long ago, and ever since I've joined, we had Ramadan lighting ceremonies. We have done last year Eid celebration, and we are planning on doing another Eid celebration this year as well, June twenty-ninth. You must have seen flyers going out from our township websites, as well, as well as from a lot of us, from the volunteers, from myself, and it's happening on June twenty-ninth at Sampson G. Smith School. There will be things for the kids, so please bring your family, friends. The theme this year, we are doing a Kowali music, musical night. And these are events that we do this because we know there's a Muslim population, a Muslim community here. We do very similar for the Indian population for Dhuwali. We try to come to Easter, you know, we do a tree lighting ceremony towards the end of the year. So, we try to make sure that this town is as diverse as our population and do things for you guys. So, it's important to mention all the initiatives and the activities that we do on the council, and that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vasanella. Thank you, Mayor. Wright mentioned-
No, no, you're fine. I just didn't want to scare you.
Mentioned the Juneteenth Parade. Just want to add to that, that I believe, I've been following the emails, I tried to help jumpstart it. I believe our own Franklin Band, as silly as this sounds, a couple of years ago, we put together a Franklin Band that would bring some joy to these celebrations, and I think they're going to perform and be one of the featured musical guests there. Took a lot of work behind the scenes, but I believe that's going, that's part of the My colleague mentioned a public works meeting. I believe Councilman Rahm is going to give a brief report on some of the things coming out of that meeting, some others that will be developing over time, we'll get more reporting I am upset to say, at least, I don't, I wrote notes. I know there was someone who mentioned, or I believe I could be wrong, about indifference, canned responses. I want to start off by saying, I listened to everything that was said tonight. I agree with and sympathize with most all of it. To suggest, I believe it's true for all of us, I know it's true for me, to suggest we come here with some kind of canned political response is absolutely and equivocally wrong. To suggest we don't go home and struggle with this or care about this is just not Last couple of meetings, I suggested a path to trying to understand and heal better, more, based on everything I heard. I think councils should keep an arms distance, but we can be involved and supportive in a practical way. I've had some conversations, both email, email and in person with people. There were members of our interfaith committee here today that I don't know, and not expecting them to have come with all the exact details of how to move that kind of stuff along. But I'm here to support that and be part of it in a way that makes sense for a council person. We shouldn't be out in front, we should be there in ways that make sense for us to support it. I hope those initiatives move forward. When the last bomb drops, there's still gonna be a lot of hurt here in this room, right? The shaking, thinking about, because that's not gonna end. I've been watching this stuff since, believe it or not, the Carter administration peace accords, and I have vivid memories, I didn't need to re-watch them recently with news clips, of peace accords of, I remember years later, I think it was Clinton with Arafat, shaking hands, which was a very tense moment for this world and the Middle East. I don't know what's gonna happen. I value my prayers, and I'll continue to pray, and if people want to think that's empty or meaningless, you could think it's empty or meaningless. I don't. I took more notes, I don't want to speak in a confusing manner, but I'll tell you this, I really try to be objective in following the news. I don't know, maybe I'm being too optimistic. I heard today different things, I chased as many different sources that I could find to see if this seemed real. I'm hopeful that there may actually be some kind of ceasefire agreement in the very near future. I'll say right now, I want the word end, I want it to end this very minute, I want it to stop. I could say what I feel and what I believe, but I'm somewhat powerless to do much more. I believe the words that Councilman Ed had mentioned are applicable a lot of ways in the other commentary. We can always revisit things, but we should be mindful of what we really are trying to accomplish here tonight, or what I hear from people about unity, about not feeling the way you're feeling. And I'm not, I don't really want to get into a resolution ceasefire and details of who should say what, but in reality, I think we all know in this room, we can say anything or pass anything, but the people, and, and I put it on the leaders of both opposing forces, need to be the leaders in making that happen, and other diplomats from around the world, and especially our country. So, we're not, not able to or unwilling to say what we feel and think and be supportive in the ways that we can. And everything I'm saying, I don't come here with canned responses, people sometimes suggest I should, unless I'm doing something presenting technical facts or a presentation of sorts, I just don't do that, because then I'm answering something I've thought about before coming here, and whatever the issue, and this is obviously a big, important issue, but there's a lot of issues that if people follow our town week to week that come up, I try to hear, read information, hear what people are thinking and feeling, and respond. So, if my response is a disappointment to people, I'm sorry, but this isn't something I take lightly. I don't think anybody up here takes lightly. I can't understand your pain completely. My father was a combat medic in World War II. How many people died in his arms, I couldn't even imagine. I can't understand his pain. I'm not gonna understand yours. I could try. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Vasanella. Councilman Embarrassan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, again, I think a couple of my colleagues here have expressed very eloquently what this council feels, and I'm with them and I'm with you, but here's what I'm gonna say. I can say this boldly, and I'm gonna say it. I support the leader of our nation's position, commander in chief's position, call for a ceasefire. I'm fully with him, I support his call for ceasefire, and that's all in our minds and thoughts and prayers. We want the war to end, there's no question about it. It is something that the role of the President of the United States, and he has spoken, and it is our duty to support him. Having said that, I'm just going to move on to a few things. I was away for the last couple of weeks, so I didn't get to participate in a lot of meetings. There's one particular meeting that I wanted to bring you up to date on. This is the master plan reevaluation. There's a steering committee that has been formed to study the traffic congestion due to the warehouse trucks moving around town. So, that took place, the first meeting took place on June sixth. I was away, but I have some notes to share with you. So, there's going to be a series of community meetings. The next one is going to be on June twenty-seventh. That's when this subcommittee is going to, the steering committee is going to listen to the community's feedback and opinions about the traffic issues created by the warehouse. I ask anybody who's interested in participating in the discussion, come along and have your voices heard. After that, there's going to be a meeting August, where the committee will send their recommendations to the planning board, which would be then considered for the master plan reevaluation of the zoning. It's, I think by October, we would have the final recommendations to the planning board. That's one thing that I want to report out. The second one would be the public works committee meeting that we just had. There is a number of road repayment projects that have been scheduled. Some of them have been completed, and some of them are coming up, some contracts will be awarded today, and there's going to be more contracts awarded in July and August going forward. So, we are fully engaged in that process of repaving our scheduled roads and streets. And I think our website would have an update on the current status.
It is absolutely up to date.
Yes. And then, we have, similarly, we have some water main replacement going on in town. One matter that you should be aware of, those who live near the McAfee School, the water main replacement there will begin and end before the school reopens, and there will be some work on the side streets, but that would not require the main street to be affected. Our money has been used and encumbered and been used to award other main replacement on the main street and a few others, so that money is being put to use for the township. And the Cooper sidewalk project has been completed. A few other sidewalk to middle school still pending, and that's going to be completed as we go through the year. There's a number of streets that I'm not going to go through with it visually. And a couple of other items, I think meter replacement project, Councilwoman Udine talked about. There's one other thing that I just wanted to mention, that every year, we get a certain amount of state aid to pay a street in town. There are some restrictions of where we can use that money. So, this year, our application is due on July first, so we are going to propose to repave Pier Street in the section between Cedar Grove and Davidson. That will go in, and the award would be in November, and the project would end in twenty twenty-four. That's all I got, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman O'Jaka.
Mayor, no doubt my fellow council members have been almost every- Let me just express myself in this case. Loss of life in the Middle East is very, very disheartening, and I wish there would be a permanent solution in that area, that humanity will live normally and comfortably. This has lasted so long, that I think by now, we have a permanent solution to it. I really feel sorry for the pain that they are going through in the Middle East. This is what I need to say, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Karazi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me start by saying that the short time that I've worked with our council, I can assure you that this council is not indifferent to different issues. They take it very seriously, we talk a lot, we sometimes lose sleep on it, and the fact that I brought it up, that, or suggested that council look at this policy, decision policy that we have, is a testament that we listen to the community. We listen to you and others, and council talks, makes decisions, and we hope and expect that the community respect that decision. But decision is based on the overall community considering the diversity. So, a couple of things that I wanted to mention. First, I had the chance to meet the security, Homeland Security representative. You know, we have 70 House of Worship, they wanted to help the House of Worship to get grants, and they also gave me a bleeding control kit. This is a life-saving kit that they wanted to give to every House of Worship, so I have connected them with the Interface Council, and hopefully every House of Worship will happen, will have one of these. I also had the, attended the Advisory Board of Health meeting, and part of the discussion was on the mental health effect of war in Gaza. And it was asked whether or not our school district doing anything to help their students? And I asked that question from Dr. Rivali, our superintendent, and I'm happy to hear from him, that they have and continue to provide plenty of opportunities that are designed to support the mental health of our students. And they have strategies that are employed district-wide to support the social, emotional learning of our students. In addition, as you may know, there are a lot of resources available in the county to help those that may need mental health support. So if you know anyone, or if you need, please reach out, there are a lot of support to help our community. And the National Trail State event was on June 1st, and the meeting that we have is going to be on June 12th, which is tomorrow. It's online, and you can find the link on the township website. Also, the Human Relations Commission meeting is scheduled for June 26th. We're going to have a speaker who's going to be talking about homeschooling, and also New Jersey National Guard will be presented by Michelle Peterson. That's what I have, and both meetings will be at 7:00. HRC meeting will be next door, right opposite to this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
I forgot to bring the pride flags that are in my car, so I apologize for not appropriately decorating the dais. I will make sure I carry them in at the next meeting, but this passed, will be two Saturdays, I don't even, lost track of time, two Sundays ago, today's Tuesday, right? Two Sundays ago, we had a pride celebration at the, what I called Gayzebo for one hour. That was very well attended, and, you know, it was a very brief sort of presentation. We had County Commissioner Melanie Morano, we had Dr. Gail Nelson from the high school who leads their Gay Straight Alliance, which they call the Pace Club, to talk a little bit about some of the struggles of high school students, particularly homelessness, after coming out as LGBT in the families. It was mostly an uplifting event and a call to action, and very much appreciated the support of council, and I want to give a shout out to Bob Vornlocker, the manager, for making that possible, and also extend our appreciation to Safi Callen for making sure everything was all prepared. She wasn't able to make it, but everything was all laid out nicely to make sure it was a great event. There was about 22 people who signed up to be involved in planning future activity next year, so I'm hopeful to hear what the community is looking to do to make sure everyone feels welcome and appreciated and supported. And that's really what it was about, and, yeah, that's all I really have to report right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Already said what I was going to say, I just want to point out that clearly, every single member of this council cares about what's going on, has pain from what's going on, and wants it to end. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I want to give some update on some popular programs for some of our youth that the deadlines are coming up. So, two quick ones, and that is the very popular Cooking with Cops program that's run, been run both out of the Community Relations Bureau and the high school in the past, that's headed up by Sergeant Burwell of the Police Department, who clearly has some culinary arts in his background, and he teaches this class, and it has been up until now for high school students. It will be again over the summer, and all of the details are on our website, but for grades nine through 12, it will be on Fridays in July, and then one Tuesday in August, and another Friday in August before they have their graduation. But the deadline for high school students is June 21st. So I want to get that out there for anyone who has a high school-aged student who's interested in the Cooking with Cops program, the deadline is June 21st. They're starting a new program this summer for Cooking with Cops Junior for middle school students. The middle school students program will be held at the Franklin Middle School Hamilton Street campus, and the deadline for the middle school students is June 28th. Again, the registration forms are available on the website, it's in the news, so it's on the homepage right now, on the main page. So, by all means, if you're, if you have a young person in your family or know of one who is interested in cooking and wants to partake in that program, the registration deadline is soon approaching. The other very popular program is the Youth Police Academy. That runs July 11th through 12th, and July 15th through the 19th with orientation on July 9th at the police headquarters at 495 DeMott Lane. That is much, very close to the deadline, the deadline being June 13th, which is Thursday. So, and I'm guessing, since it doesn't say on our website, that there are still at least a couple openings, if your child, grandchild, brother, sister, niece, or nephew, whatever it might be, is interested in learning about what it is to be a police officer, June 13th deadline, available on our website. And then I just want to add a little bit more to Councilwoman Udine's comments about the water meter replacement program. Put my glasses on so I can read this. The company that has been contracted with the town to do these meter replacements is called Vipo, V-E-P-O. That will be in any, if your home has been identified as in need of a replacement water meter as part of this initiative, you will receive information by mail. Vipo is a company that was chosen specifically because of their experience in meter installations in residential homes, this is what they do. The people who will be coming to replace your meter will be in uniform, they will have identification, their vehicles will be marked, they have been subject to background investigations, and you can sign up to receive notifications once you make your appointment as to when they will be coming to your house within a four-hour window. Initially, it will be at your appointment, and then if you provide an email address and/or a cell phone number, they will text or email you when you are the next person in line for your appointment, so that they know, you will know that they are coming. So, this is something that will be a significant number of our residential units in the town, as I think Councilwoman Udine said, about 40% of our water meters are due for replacement. That is a little over 7,000 homes, so it's a lot of water meter replacements, and that's why we contracted with this company to do it. And that's what I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. There's no council discussion item. We're on to approval of the minutes. I present the following minutes to the Township Council. The work session, regular meeting of March 26th, April 9th, and May 14th, and the executive session of April 9th. Do we have a motion?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, anyone want to pull an item, correct anything? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Barison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman O'Nijaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Warrants in the amount of $2,117,317 on June 11th, 2024, presented to Township Council for payment, so have a motion on the warrants.
I move the warrants as read, be paid.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, anyone like to pull an item or question an item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Barison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman O'Nijaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
And that was for public hearing and adoption of ordinance on second reading. First reading is when we introduce an ordinance to the world. Second reading is when we vote on the ordinance, and there's a public hearing before each vote. Ordinance 4440-24, an ordinance amending the code of Township Franklin County, Somerset State, New Jersey, more particularly, Chapter 112, land development addressing anti-idling signage, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. Public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motions open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public with the same rules, except you can only speak about this item.
Mayor, seeing no one coming forward to speak on this ordinance, motion to close the public portion of the hearing.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Motion is carried. We are, that, that public session is closed, we have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. I think this speaks for itself, the anti-idling signs. Any other discussion?
I just want to thank the Township Manager for all of his work on the anti-idling ordinance. I know through TARA and the Environmental Commission, you know, there were a lot of hopes and dreams that maybe got dashed in some ways, but it's a positive step forward to help reduce air pollution from idling vehicles that, you know, choke our communities. So, we appreciate all that you've done.
So, I know it was a labor of love of the Environmental Commission. It was a labor for me. I understand, and that's why I'm saying thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to echo Deputy Mayor's comments, and also I'd like to thank Ms. Peterson and any of the others that don't sit on a council or commission or staff member that have, I know relentlessly been pushing for this, which is a good thing, and I believe will lead to better health and happier residents in our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Madam Clerk.
Councilman, I'm sorry, Councilman Barison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman O'Nijaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
It passes. Ordinance 4441-24, an ordinance to allow three houses to be individually serviced by wells on a temporary basis until public water is available, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required, so have a motions open to the public.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public portion is open on this item only.
Mayor, seeing no one from public come forward, I motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public portion is closed, we have a motion to adopt.
All moved.
Seconded.
This is, developments going in, we only have enough water authority right now for all but three of the houses, so those three houses will go on wells temporarily. Any other comments about this? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Mayor Barison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman O'Nijaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
It passes. Ordinance 4442-24, an ordinance accepting sidewalks and utility easement from the Executive Drive Investments LLC for the premises known as Block 1, I'm sorry, Block 514, part of land, part of Lot 34, also known as 490 Elizabeth Avenue, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required, so have a motions open to the public.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public hearing is open on this item only.
Seeing no one from the public come forward, Mayor, motion to close the public portion of the hearing on the ordinance.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Public hearing is closed, so have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. I think this is pretty self-explanatory, so won't go any further. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Barison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman O'Nijaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Okay, the next four, sorry, the next three ordinances are all about money and paying for the things that we budgeted for in the budget, either by capital expenditures or by bond ordinance. So ordinance 4443-24, an ordinance providing for the various 2024 capital improvements in equipment acquisitions by and in the Township of Franklin County, Somerset State, New Jersey, appropriating $7,577,800, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $7,198,957 bonds or notes of the Township of Franklin to finance part of the cost, therefore, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required, so have a motion to open to the public.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we're open for a public hearing on this item only.
Seeing no one coming forward to speak on this ordinance, motion to close the hearing on this ordinance.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, public hearing is closed, so have a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Mayor Barison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman O'Nijaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Petasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Ordinance 4444-24, bond ordinance providing for various 2024 capital improvements for the water utility by and in the Township of Franklin and County of Somerset, State and New Jersey, appropriating $3,695,000, therefore, and authorizing the issuance of a $3,695 bond or note for the township to finance the costs thereof, is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required, so have a motion to open for public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, we're open for public hearing on this item only.
Seeing nobody coming forward, Mayor, motion to close the public portion of the hearing on this ordinance.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion is carried, public hearing is closed, so have a motion to adopt.
Vote.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Mayor Barison. Councilman Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman O'Nijaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
It passes. Ordinance 4445-24, capital ordinance appropriating $2,493,000 for the Open Space Trust Fund to pay for various capital acquisitions and improvements for the Township of Franklin and the County of Somerset, State, and New Jersey is presented for public hearing and final adoption. The public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motions open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public on this item only.
Seeing no one coming forward, Mayor, motion to close the public portion of the hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion is carried. Public hearing is closed. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on how this slightly different ordinance? Ordinance 4446-24, an ordinance Township of Franklin County, Somerset State, and New Jersey authorizing the conveyance of a utility easement to Millen Builders LLC within...
All the kind of different ordinance on our agenda there.
We just need to vote on F 4445-24.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yep, all right. We're back to ordinance 4445, the open space capital ordinance. We have, we have a motion in a second.
So moved.
I think we have a motion in a second.
We have a motion in a second, right.
Yeah, so we just need to do a roll call.
Madam Clerk.
Councilman Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman O'Nijaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Thank you. So now ordinance 4446, an ordinance of the Township of Franklin County, Somerset State, and New Jersey authorizing the conveyance of a utility easement on Millen Builders LLC with a portion of Heller Park Lane is presented for public hearing and final adoption. On public hearing has been noticed as required. Do we have a motions open to the public?
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? I'm sorry, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion is carried. We're open to the public on this item only.
Mayor, seeing no one come forward, so I'm going to motion to close the public portion of the hearing on this ordinance.
Second.
Moved in seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion is carried. Do we have a motion to adopt?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. Any discussion on this item? Madam Clerk.
Councilman Barrison.
Yes.
Councilwoman Francois. Councilman Karazi.
Yes.
Mayor Kramer.
Yes.
Councilman O'Nijaka.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Potasnik.
Yes.
Councilwoman Udine.
Yes.
Councilman Vasanella.
Yes.
Councilman Wright.
Okay, we're now on to first readings, item number 14. We have one new first reading. Ordinance 4447-24, an ordinance amending the municipal code of the Township of Franklin County, Somerset, New Jersey, more particularly Chapter 183, property maintenance by adding a new Article 8, I'm sorry, 13, privately owned salt storage. The following ordinance is presented to Township Council for adoption. First reading posting in publication in accordance with law and public hearing and final adoption. The meeting of the Township Council to be held on Tuesday, June 25th, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers. We have a motion to introduce and set public hearing.
I'll make motion to introduce, and if I'm allowed to, also ask the manager, just if he can give a...
After we have a second.
Second, okay.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Manager.
So this is at the, at the direction of the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection as it relates to the new stormwater regulations in the state of New Jersey. And it's to ensure that the icing material doesn't make its way into the stormwater system.
Excellent.
So that is the requirement that we are...
Excellent. I saw privately...
That's what it's for.